Technical difficulties, we will not be on Comcast tonight, nor the website. We will have to post the website tomorrow with the Zoom recording. And I'm going to get started on Facebook Live right now.
Uh-oh, is Councilman Alexander not here? Councilman Alexander, I don't see, and so Chief Bandy, I'm going to ask you to pray for us.
We're still waiting on Facebook, please stand by.
Is that okay, Don? Thank you. Jeff, is Councilman Alexander here?
No. There is some hesitation with Facebook, please stand by.
David Gregory, you look young in the pictures the other day.
Well, they had pictures of you 35 years ago, Gregory.
Yeah, how you like it?
Y'all, why didn't you send us some updated picture?
He didn't know who they were being sent, and we had one of them sitting there, it looked like on the deck of a boat somewhere with a beard.
Passed out.
You deserve everything that Paige said about you yesterday, too.
Thanks very much, yes, that was very nice, Paige.
My pleasure.
I was going to say something, Gregory, but I figured I better hush.
Y'all been good. Right.
I apologize for the delay, I'll tell you what, I'm gonna...
Don't let it happen no more, Joe.
Stop the current live and attempt to stream again, so please stand by.
Paige, right quick, Tracy Townsend's got COVID.
Oh, no, I'm sorry to hear that.
Really?
How's he doing, is he feeling okay?
I think he's about over, to be honest with you, I think he's skating through it pretty quick. I'm going to try John D. right quick. Unless y'all have.
Lori?
He usually comes here to do the meetings, Sean.
If we don't hook up with Facebook, we're not going to have an archived recording of this.
We can't, well, we can't have a meeting because we have to stream live, right, Susan?
Correct. Stream live, I mean, we're on Zoom, but you're saying it has to be on Facebook, too? Well, it's supposed to be, we're supposed to be streaming it on our website.
It definitely will not be on the website.
John D.'s running a few minutes late, he will be at the meeting.
That's good.
Lori, do you want to try and sign in as host and then stream to Facebook that way?
Okay. Reclaim host. Okay, so, I haven't done the Facebook thing, you're going to have to...
Okay, bottom of the screen, mouse over, you've got the three dots for more.
Yes.
Stream to Facebook.
I don't have that option.
Okay.
I have is stop livestream.
Is she an administrator?
Go ahead and stop livestream first.
Okay, okay, live on Facebook. Shared a news, shared to...
A page you manage. It's the bottom selection.
Yeah, apparently.
And then you'll select city government.
Okay, hold on, I'm going to have to get into Facebook on...
I can do it if I need to.
Hold on. Give me just a sec. Try this one more time, live on Facebook. Page I manage, got it, and dropdown City of Gallatin. Okay, next. Working on it. And one other thing. Councilman Fan, if you speak tonight, because you're not on video, the public can't see you, you need to identify yourself each time you speak with your name.
Okay.
Okay, let's, we are live on Facebook.
Okay. Normally, it would indicate that the upper left.
I don't see it. Okay, hold on, I mean... Shows me a Facebook page with all the people in it, is that right?
Yes, and on the left-hand side of the screen, yep. You got further than I did, so we're almost live. There we go.
Okay, so, but you can still host, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Do I need to make you host again?
Yes, please.
Okay.
John Alexander's just entered the room. Okay, we are ready to rock and roll.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here for this October 20th, 2020 meeting of the Gallatin City Council. We do have to begin this meeting by reading our permission, if you will, to have this meeting virtually. I do want to tell people who may have tuned in on Facebook, we are not due to technical difficulties, we are not live on our website tonight, we're also not live on Comcast. We will be sharing this video to our website tomorrow, but if people want to participate in the meeting tonight, they have to do so, they have to do so anyway through the Zoom link. But they can view it on Facebook, so you might share that message with anyone you know that may be wishing to watch it on Comcast or on our website. So I'll read this, and then I will seek a motion from the council. It says pursuant to Governor Lee's executive orders number 16, number 34, number 51, and number 60, and the need to limit the community spread of COVID-19, the October 20th, Gallatin City Council meeting will be held by electronic means. The meeting will be livestreamed to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of the council and the citizens of Gallatin. You may join the Zoom meeting at the link that you see there on the screen. And you can dial in if you want to participate by phone by calling 470-381-2552, or 470-250-9358. The webinar ID for this meeting is 836-1493-7646. You can also find that link on our Facebook page, on our web, and on our website as well. So if you want to join that way, you certainly may. At this time, I would ask for a motion...
Motion to approve electronic meeting.
Second.
Okay, have motion by Councilman Overton, a second by Councilwoman Love, is there any discussion? I'm going to ask Ms. Kitchell to call the roll for a vote, please.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Present.
Councilman Fan.
Here.
Councilman Fennell. Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor seven I, zero Nays.
Thank you, so we will be holding this meeting electronically, and we will proceed on. The meeting is officially called to order, and we will begin this meeting like we do each meeting with the invocation, and tonight I've asked our Police Chief Don Bandy to pray for us.
Let us pray. God, what gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we are just blessed to have another day. We pray for this city, Lord, we pray for this council, and the department heads, and all the workers, as we are servants to our community, and servants to you, Lord. We pray for this meeting, Lord, that you give us wisdom and knowledge of what we need to do, the decisions we need to make, Lord, and you give the glory and all of it, in Jesus' name, beg it all, amen.
Amen.
Amen. Now, I'm going to ask Ms. Kitchell to call the official roll.
Vice Mayor Camp.
Present.
Councilman Alexander. I can't hear you, Councilman Alexander.
Looks like he's stepped away from...
He's there.
Okay. Councilman Fan.
Here.
Councilman Fennell.
Here.
Councilman Hayes.
Present.
Councilwoman Love.
Here.
Councilman Overton.
Present.
And is Mr. Alexander back?
He stepped out for just a minute, I'm not sure, he went out with Matt, they may be logging into a different computer, but I'm not sure, well, here he comes. He's running in.
We will wait, so we can add him to the official roll.
You need to, you need to make sure he, you can hear him, he has to be able to be heard to be counted present. Okay.
We heard him.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes, I'm present.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you so much. We will now move on to the approval of the minutes for the October 6th, 2020 Gallatin City Council meeting.
Second.
I did not hear who made the original motion, I know the Councilwoman...
Councilman Overton.
Okay, Councilman Overton made the motion, seconded by Councilwoman Love, are there any corrections or additions? All right, seeing none, I'm going to ask Ms. Kitchell to call the roll for the vote for the approval.
Councilman, I mean Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor seven yeses, zero nays.
Thank you so much. Now, we have public recognition on agenda-related items, this is the time of the meeting where people may speak to address anything with us on tonight's agenda. We also have a time at the end of the meeting that you can speak to address anything that's not on the agenda. So we open public comment, we ask that you introduce yourself, give us your address, and you will have five minutes to speak, which will be timed. I will turn the meeting over to Mr. Henshaw, he will give further instructions on how to participate if you're calling in by phone, and also, he'll remind you of this, but I will too, make sure that you unmute yourself once we unmute you. So with that, public recognition on agenda-related items is open.
Thank you, Mayor, if you're using a P, a computer, basically, you will use the raise your hand function by mousing over the screen, and that, that link will be at the bottom. Same if you're on an app, if you're calling in, you will raise your hand by using, hitting star nine, and then star six toggles your mute and unmute. We do have someone that raised their hand. Juvontz, go ahead.
Hello, this is Michelle Juvontz, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. 1335 Long Hollow Pike. I wanted to speak about the bond issuance that's on the agenda tonight. I'm not in favor of us borrowing money when we don't know what our revenue will be for next year. Today, I listened to your discussion from the last week's committee meeting about that, and I agree with Councilman Fan when he said that just because the rates are low, it doesn't mean that we can make the payments. And I also think that having a list of good projects to do is not a reason to borrow money when we don't know what our revenue will be. If we can't make the payments, which I guess will be, I think on the $17 million, it's going to be a little over a million dollars a year, is what the payment will be. And if we can't make those payments because we're not sure what our revenue will be because of COVID, and we're just kind of in a weird situation, what are you going to do? Are you going to raise our property taxes to meet that obligation? I don't think that that's something that people can afford if we're going to be in a situation where it's already, we're not getting the revenue. That will mean that people are not in a good situation, and having their property taxes raised will be a bad thing to do. I think that, I believe the only reason we should go into debt is for something necessary. For example, one of the things on the list of projects is a half a million dollars for irrigating the golf course. That is not a necessity, that should be something we go into debt for. And I just would like to ask you to remember that this is our money, this is the citizens' money. People's hard-earned money that they're paying in taxes, and it's not something that we should say that it's okay to borrow, and especially when we don't know what, what's going to be happening in the next year, and saddling this city with debt, and possibly, you know, having to have the citizens cough up more of their hard-earned dollars in a time like this. So I'm really concerned, so I would like to ask you to really consider that for tonight. The other thing, too, just to, to let you know that you really have to have the four yeses to be able to pass, which is the law that's in your city charter that says you have to have four yeses to pass a resolution or an ordinance. Or it says a majority of who's present, so actually, there's seven of you, so you have to have four yeses to pass that tonight. So maybe you would want to make it a lesser amount, and really discuss like what you're going to spend the money on first, because it seems like what you're doing is backwards, because you all were talking about saying how much we're going to spend before saying what we're going to spend it on, and then there's things in there that aren't necessary, like golf course irrigation. So those are my concerns. I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Just a reminder, if you would like to speak, use the raise your hand function. If you are the one caller that I don't recognize on cell phone, please use star nine to raise your hand. Okay, I don't see anyone else willing to speak.
All right. And with that, we will close public recognition on agenda-related items and move now to the mayor's comments. One thing I want to say is that I did present the state of the city yesterday to the chamber, I appreciate the council members who were able to attend, and we had several employees and department heads who did, and lots of members of the community. So I appreciate your interest in hearing what I had to say about my perception of the state of the city. That address is available on Facebook, on our YouTube channel, and also, if it's not on our website yet, it will be soon, but you can watch it there if you'd like to spend some time doing that. With that, I will move into the regular agenda, and we will begin with item number one, which is second reading on ordinance 02009-41, and Councilman Hayes is recognized for that.
This is ordinance of the City of Gallatin, Tennessee, rezoning portions of two lots, portions of two parcels totaling approximately 10.02 acres of the Greensboro Village PUD, less right-of-way of Greensboro Drive and Greenlee Boulevard from the R6 High Density District to MRO PUD, multiple residential and office plan unit development district, located east and west of Greensboro Drive. Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Overton, a second by Councilman Fan, opening the floor for discussion. Anyone wishing to speak? With that, I'll ask Ms. Kitchell to call the roll for the vote on second reading on ordinance 02009-41.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor seven I, zero Nays.
Thank you, does pass unanimously. Item two is second reading on ordinance 02009-42, Vice Mayor Camp.
Thank you, Mayor, this is orders of City of Gallatin, Southern County, Tennessee, approving a preliminary master development plan for the Noble Park townhomes on two parcels, tax map 126L Group C, and parcel 026, or point 200, and 02700, totaling 2.65 acres located north of Coles Ferry Road and west of Airport Road, authorizing revisions to be indicated on official zoning atlas, repealing conflicting orders, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date, so moved.
Second.
Have a vote, a motion by Vice Mayor Camp, a second by Councilman Alexander, anyone wish to discuss this? They're seeing no one, this is ordinance number 02009-42, and I'll ask Ms. Kitchell to call the roll for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor seven I, zero Nays.
Thank you, second reading on ordinance 02009-42 passes unanimously. Item three is second reading on ordinance 02009-44, Councilman Overton.
Thank you, Mayor, this is an ordinance amending Gotham Municipal Chapter 5 Buildings and Building Regulation in Chapter 9 Fire Protection and Prevention, and I so move.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Overton, a second by Councilwoman Love, is there any discussion? Seeing none, this is second reading on ordinance 02009-44, and Ms. Kitchell will call the roll for your vote.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Seven I, zero Nays, Mayor.
Thank you, it passes unanimously. Item number four, second reading on ordinance 02009-45, Councilman Alexander.
Thank you, Mayor, yes, this is second reading on, on, orders number 02009-45, or appropriating and correcting environmental service revenue for fiscal year 2021, and I so move.
Most by Councilman Alexander, second by Councilman Overton, any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Kitchell will call the roll for a vote on second reading on ordinance 02009-45.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor seven I, zero Nays.
Okay, it passes unanimously. We move to item number five, which is second reading on ordinance 02009-46, Councilman Fan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor, this is the second reading on the ordinance 02009-46, ordinance appropriating $5,042.45 for legal services, I so move.
Motion by Councilman Fan, second by Councilman Alexander, any discussion? And Ms. Kitchell, if you'd call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor seven I, zero Nays.
Thank you, second reading on ordinance 02009-46 does pass unanimously. Number six is first reading on ordinance 0201-0-47, and Councilman Hayes.
Yes, this is an ordinance of the City of Gallatin, Tennessee, rezoning 47.51 acre portion of Greensboro Village PUD, from the MRO PUD, multiple residential and office plan unit development district to the SP, specific plan district, and approving an amendment, preliminary master development plan for Greensboro North Transit Ready Development, totaling 196.45 acres located east and west of Greenlee Boulevard. Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Hayes, a second by Councilman Alexander, opening the floor for discussion.
Mayor, I think we were, I think we talked about this at our committee meeting, but we're going to have somebody here at the next committee meeting to discuss this more correct, Councilman Hayes.
Yes, I think we did, we talked about that, but, because I think there was some concern about possibly if anybody could build apartments on it or anything like that, so I think we are, I think somebody's going to be here, so.
I support this, but we just, I just want to make sure it's on our committee meeting next week.
Okay, I think a note. Anyone else with anything?
And make sure that they contact, you know, whoever's representing them to be here, so.
Mr. McCord, you got that note, thank you. Okay, are you all ready to vote on this?
Yes.
Okay, this is first reading on ordinance 0201-0-47, and Ms. Kitchell, if you would call the roll for us, please.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
No.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor six I's, one no.
Thank you. Passes six to one. Item number seven is resolution R2009-50, and Councilwoman Love.
Thank you, Mayor, this is the resolution of the City of Gallatin, adopting a plan of services for the annexation of 12.91 plus or minus acres of Hartsfield Pike right-of-way located adjacent to the current city limits from Airport Road to west of Hartsfield Lane, which is a private street and private, providing for an effective date, I so move.
Have a motion by Councilwoman Love, a second by Councilman Overton, is there any discussion? Seeing no one indicating my wish to speak, I will ask Ms. Kitchell to take the vote on resolution R2009-50.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor seven I, zero Nays.
Thank you, Ms. Kitchell. Item number eight, it does pass unanimously. Item number eight is resolution on R2009-51, Ms. Love again.
Thank you, this is a resolution of the City of Gallatin, annexing 12.91 plus or minus acres of Hartsfield Pike right-of-way located adjacent to the current city limits from Airport Road to west of Hartsfield Lane, authorizing the annex right-of-way to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, authorizing assignment of an annexed area to a council district, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date, I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Love, second by Councilman Alexander, anyone wishing to discuss? Okay, this is resolution R2009-51, Ms. Kitchell, if you would call the roll for us, please.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor seven I, zero Nays.
Thank you, it does pass unanimously. Item nine is resolution R2009-53, Councilman Hayes is recognized.
Yeah, this is an initial resolution authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $17,500 of general obligation bonds of the City of Gallatin, Tennessee. I'll make a motion for discussion.
Second.
Is that a proper motion? Is that a proper motion?
Well, it's not a motion to pass the ordinance, it's a motion for discussion.
I'll make a motion then, since it's a resolution, I'll just make, I'll change it, I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilman Overton, opening the floor for discussion.
Yeah, question.
Okay.
You know, I still think the 17.5 is too much, I know we wanted to go to 20, and we started at 15, but I think we need to back it up some and go back to the 15, that's just my thoughts on it.
Councilman Hayes, I agree, I'm not comfortable with the 17, I even looked at some scenarios today where we could reduce it further if we so desired, and the number I came up with was 11, but it... Councilman Hayes, I agree. I'm not comfortable with the seventeen. I even looked at some scenarios today where we could reduce it further, um, if we so desired, and the number I came up with was eleven, but it had the designated funds for reimbursement in that.
I mean, I, I would feel more comfortable at eleven, to be honest with you, um, just because, you know, the unforeseen or the future, you know, we just don't know what's gonna happen.
Right, right. Well, and, and the reality is, is we're probably gonna need to go to market again another three to five years for more projects, and, you know, as we grow and we do more things, we're gonna assume more debt. I mean, the positive thing is that we, as a city, have relatively low debt and, um, you know, can't afford it. We have great bond ratings and, and lots of, uh, but I just, I don't, I, that's such a big number for a city our size with a budget our size.
Let me ask this. Have you, you said you, 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 you came up with a scenario of, um, eleven million.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, is that something you could show us, not to, you don't have to tonight, but I mean, you could do it another time or something like that, so.
Show it to you pretty quickly, if they'll give me permission to share my screen. And if I don't make a mess of trying to do that.
And I mean, what you can do is you can just tell us what you cut out and what you don't think is necessary. I mean, that, I'm sure that's what we'd all like to know.
Well, I think it'd be easy to share my screen because there's a couple of scenarios on there that, um, cause I also looked at, um, one where I'm, I moved some proposals around as well, um.
I mean, while you're doing that, what's the rest of the council think? I mean, what do y'all think?
May I show it to you real quickly? Y'all okay with me doing that?
Yeah.
Okay, um. Let's see. Is it sharing?
No.
Should have permission to do that, though.
Well.
Rachel Nichols on this.
Yes, sir, I'm here.
What kind of money, uh, and assets, kind of figure, just a ballpark, we have?
I'm sorry, what kind of?
Our assets in Gallatin worth?
Just the general fund has, um, hundred and forty, hundred and fifty million dollars worth of assets.
Okay.
Sorry, that's not a number. I know off the top of my head. Are you guys seeing what's there now?
Yes, we are.
Yes.
So what I've done here is, okay, that, that first thing, whoops, it's trying to make me leave this meeting, that, that first column, well, let me go back to here. This, this was the list of all the things that were kind of proposed in the beginning, okay? And, um, so we took that forty-four million, one hundred thousand, and I came up with the recommendation that is that column that you see there that says updated nine eight twenty twenty. And, um, um, and the difference was that I, you know, I grouped some things together. So some of the things were specific and some of the things were not. Um, the number that we, um, so that, that, that second column, updated nine eight twenty-two, is what I brought to you guys that first time, about the fif- fifteen million dollars. And then, um, went in and kind of played with some numbers, and what I did was I upped the city hall renovations up to a hundred thousand, uh, by a hundred thousand. I kept the parking structure the same. I reduced the parkland purchase down to two million. I, um, kept the parks, oh, I increased the parks up to five hundred thousand because I thought that would give us a little more to spend if we did want to move forward with doing something for Clearview. Nat Caldwell's still there at five hundred, the golf course irrigation, which I, I mean, that, I, I agree with the caller that, that does not sound like a requirement or, or a necessity, but that golf course has a lot of money invested into it, and if we don't maintain it, that's huge damage to one of our largest assets. Um, the police fire training center remains there. Anything else there remains the same. So that still equals fifteen million dol- with just a little bit moved around some. And then when I came back with a really, you know, an eleven million dollar scenario, it was this. I took out the city hall renovations. I took out the manager for the bond projects. I, um, uh, the down, town parking structure has to remain. I kept the, uh, land reimbursement at two million dollars. I took out, um, the parks money and the Nat Caldwell money, and then I, um, left the golf course irrigation in there, and the Smiths, uh, the, the, the.
Loose fire training.
The, yeah, the police and pride, the roads, well, let me tell you, go through this the rest way. The four point two million dollars, I, I reduced streets down from five point two to four point two. I left the Smith Street in there because that's something we have to do. I reduced the sidewalks and greenways down to a million, and I had to leave the Town Creek flood improvements in there. Now, that comes with that caveat that there would still be seven hundred thousand dollars covered for the training center and five hundred thousand dollars covered for Nat Caldwell that would come from that two hundred thousand, which would still leave us with eight hundred thousand dollars where we could, um, you know, have some freedom to spend that money on other projects. Um, so that was kind of the last.
I like that.
Downtown parking structure, is that enough in there for that?
Well, um, we, we're going to have to pay them more than that, but I think that some of that can come from our, 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 well, from our cash or from that two million that we're reimbursing ourselves with, um, uh, uh. I just didn't.
I think it looks good. I mean, I like that.
Do whatever you all want. I'm just saying, I'm really uncomfortable with the seventeen million.
So with eleven million, is the, is the, is the fire, is the, uh, police, is the police training center still in at eleven million?
Well, my proposal is to use that two million dollars to, to spend one point two of that, five hundred for Nat Caldwell and seven hundred for the, um, training center.
Mayor, may I also clarify on the golf course irrigation system? We have an existing irrigation system that's over twenty, thirty years old. There are some parts that we can no longer replace because they're not made anymore, and then the lines themselves have been in the ground so long, they're brittle and breaking, and we have a large number of breakage, uh, that has to be repaired. We're spending tens of thousands of dollars every year on repair costs to the existing irrigation system. Um, the golf course has requested this improvement for three or four years now, and that's why it's a necessity more than a amenity. It's because of how much we're putting in repairs each year.
Um, and I actually think that that cost could come in higher, but my hope, sorry, is that we could absorb it in our budget, so.
Got a question about the bond.
Okay, um, Ms. Uh, Councilman Thien, I believe that's you, right?
We have, do we have to borrow this money all at once?
Well, um, I actually had that discussion with Ms. Nichols. I mean, in, the problem with going to market multiple times is that we're, we're paying those same expenses that we have to pay to the rating agency, to our advisor. Um, what else is in there, Rachel, that we have to pay every time we do it? And those are significant fees. Um.
Bond counsel and then our paying agent that will take care of the payments to the individuals who win the bids, uh, win the purchases. We have a list of cost.
Yeah, in your packet, you can see the breakdown of the expenses we pay associated with it.
I got another question. Oh. What rate of interest will, will we be paying on that bond?
We don't know yet. That's, that's what's decided when you go to market. We anticipate it would be very good because we have a great, um, interest rates are low and we have a great bond rating.
Okay.
Am I right in saying that that way, Ms. Nichols, before?
Yes, um, right now, we're estimating that it will be a one point seven percent rate as the all-in rate.
If we ever approached an insurance company, Craig may have more to say about this, about borrowing money from an insurance company, uh, we'll just say State Farm, and I know they have some good rates, and maybe if we could structure it where we had a line of credit and only pay interest on it as we used it.
To have a line of credit would, would mean we would have a variable interest rate, and that is not something that I recommend.
I don't either, but, oh man, sometimes you can get it fixed for five years.
Additionally, we have one step away from the highest bond rating, highest credit rating available. We will get a really good interest rate. We're not a, a debt risk to anyone, even with an eleven million or fifteen million dollar bond issue. We are solid financially, and that shows on our credit rating each year. Um, I don't know that we could negotiate, well, we can't negotiate new money interest rates. State of Tennessee requires us to competitively bid any new borrowing. If we were refunding or refinancing an existing bond, we could negotiate an interest rate with someone, but for new money that we're borrowing, State of Tennessee requires that it be a competitive sale, and anyone is welcome to bid on it, but I don't know that an insurance agency would come in with a better rate than some of these national firms that will bid on our bond deal.
Well, here's my, here's my, I have another question. Do we have to, let's just say we pass this for eleven million dollars. Do we have to borrow the eleven million all at the same time, start paying interest on it before it's used?
Yes, we do.
Has anybody ever tried to negotiate with a large bank, maybe even a small bank for that matter, depends on what you call large and smaller, uh, small, or has anybody gone to an insurance company and seen how they would structure a loan? That we could, we could borrow on it for, let's just say, for two years, till we use the money and have the rate fixed. Has anybody ever attempted that?
We can borrow a bond anticipation note, which is short-term and typically a very competitive interest rate. Um, but that would be with the understanding that eventually we would issue a bond. Again.
Would we, from what the rate was, if it's two years from then?
That has to be competitively bid. We cannot negotiate due money for the general fund. We're not allowed by law to do that.
If we put the mayor's house up for collateral, would it help?
I'm sorry?
If we put the mayor's house up for collateral, would it help?
Um, I'm not sure she would be agreeable.
I don't think it would help.
Steve, I don't think a bank or insurance company would, would be able to e- come anywhere close to the kind of rates that we get off of bonds. I don't, I don't, Craig can speak up, I mean, as far as State Farm goes, but.
I, I wouldn't have a clue.
I don't think any bank or anything would compete anywhere close to those rates, Steve.
I've just, I just know some big buyers are going to some insurance companies now and getting some real cheap rates, and, uh.
Well.
I'll look into that a little more.
I have our, I have our financial advisor on my cell phone, communicating with her. She's watching the mu- uh, the meeting on Facebook, and she stated that insurance companies are usually large purchasers of municipal bonds, and they hold a lot of our existing bonds now. They will buy from our underwriter, um, not the whole thing, but portions of it.
Okay.
And she said with an eleven million dollar project fund, the resolution would actually be worded as eleven point five million. That extra half million is noted in the resolution to cover any underwriters fee, uh, underwriters discount, the cost of issuance from bond counsel, financial advisor, Moody's, or whomever we go with a rating agency, those miscellaneous costs, and it also gives us wiggle room in the event that the market, um, our bonds sell at a premium on the market, then we wouldn't have to come back to you to have the adjustment made. When we have, when we have.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, when we have the sale, a lot of times we have to resize this, the bond, based on whether it's at a premium or a discount, and that's just, um, whatever the market happens to be doing on the day that we go for the sale. But that's our normal process, where we borrow down to have just the amount that you have put in as, as close as possible to the amount that you're approving for the projects.
So do I understand that we've got a half a million dollars in fees to borrow eleven million dollars?
No, sir, it wouldn't be for just fees. It would include any premium that the buyer may be willing to pay just to get our good bonds. A lot of times, um, the market will allow us to get, it's not free money, but, um, it's money that we don't ask for, but they're willing to pay just because they want our bonds.
So are we buying down our rate essentially?
No.
Uh, they essentially offer it based on their, um.
Their desire to have us in their portfolio.
And borrow more money from them.
Do we have a projection how, on how long it'll take to use that eleven million dollars?
That would depend on our department heads and how quickly they move on these projects.
I would think if we had those projections and we put the numbers to it, we'd have a better answer if we could save money by going another route. I know it's plain A, pardon my French, but, uh, I think we need to investigate.
The, the reimbursement to ourselves would occur immediately. The parking structure and Smith Street widening project would be pretty quick, based on the county moving forward with theirs. Um, the golf irrigation, I'm sure they would be glad to get that in as soon as possible and hopefully get it in place before spring, when golf season picks back up. Um, road projects and sidewalk screen ways, I'm sure the department heads have some recommendations on which of those can be started immediately, and then the Town Creek flood improvements, we're already obligated with the Corps of Engineers to pay that. We were just funding it through a bond issue versus paying it out of, paying it out of pocket, so to speak. So that one's already underway, um, as well.
It sounds like we'd be using that before a year's out, then.
I anticipate no more than two years. Depends on the road projects and how quickly they get underway. Those tend to be the longer, um, duration projects.
That's understandable with the weather. I'm just exploring options, trying to find some money. My, my, it may not work.
I like this, Mayor. I think it looks good. Um, I guess I can make an amendment. I'd like to make an amendment that we adopt this one instead of the seventeen five.
Having a, uh, motion on an amendment from Councilman Hayes, with a second by Councilman Thien, opening the floor for any discussion.
I just, I just say that, um, I'd love to proceed with every one of those projects on that list, and the cost of borrowing is less than the cost of inflation right now, so I think it's a good time to do it, but I have been uncomfortable going against the recommendation of the mayor, so I'm, I'm good with this, too.
Well, I, I, again, you know, I will be supportive in kind of way to make work whatever the will of this body is. Um, the eleven million was just me kind of playing. Um, I think I would still be fine with the fifteen if you wanted to go there. I mean, you see the difference, particularly in the street funding, that makes, makes me concerned, but, um, you know, I wanted to give you a lower, a lower total scenario, and so that's it. Um, so that's what's there. But we have a motion and a second on an amendment, so that would open the floor for the vote on that.
Connie.
Ready to vote? Ms. Kitchell, if you'd call the roll for a vote on the amendment, please.
Vice Mayor Camp.
Ah.
Councilman Alexander.
No.
Councilman Thien.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor, six I's, one no.
Okay, um.
Mayor, may I also mention something?
Certainly, certainly.
Um, since we did not have the sale before the federal election, um, the bond market does not respond. the bond market does not respond favorably. And if at the federal level, there's any sort of contested vote, we would hold off going to market until the bond market settled back down. It might be a couple of days if it's nothing urgent, but if there's something like hanging chads and, um, some of the threatened, um, activities that might come along on the federal level. If the bond market stays volatile, we won't schedule our sale, uh, until it settles down. And I just wanted council to be aware of that. If the interest rates are bouncing all over, we don't want to go to market and, and take that chance that it's a bad day. But I will keep you updated, um, on when we actually start moving forward with that.
Now, I, I agree with that guidance too, Ms. Nichols. I thank you. Um, council, you're welcome to weigh in as well. Um, I would say that, you know, the department heads have not seen this eleven million scenario, so if you do pass it with this, with these numbers, we will, um, still have some time to, you know, something, if something were to change, we could always come back next week before we get the ball rolling, I guess.
Mayor, I'm still concerned about the Caldwell Park as well, and, and I think y'all been talking about this for a long time, but you're still gonna bring your proposal to us, right?
What now?
On, on Nat Caldwell Park, you're still gonna continue with that and?
Right. And I think too, actually, when you see the, um, um, yeah, I, when it gets structured, you'll see how it's structured, so that it would be like parks, it would be, um, roads, it would be building projects. But yeah, I think that's important. I do, I do, I do.
I, I feel that Nat Caldwell Park, I think we'll get a lot of, I, I think there'll be several people who get on board with us and help us get achieving that goal.
I know we're cutting it out right now, but I think we'll still have the money to do it down the road some point, but I.
Well, remember that I say to me in this eleven million dollar scenario that one point two million needs to come out of that two million that we're reimbursing ourselves. That would be, um, five hundred for Nat Caldwell, seven hundred for the training center. We could change that if you wanted to, but I.
I'm okay. I, I just.
But I think, I, I just think reimbursing ourselves gives us a bit more flexibility because we don't want to tie our hands committing to something that may change in cost or, um, you know, for instance, if that training center doesn't use all that money or, um, it just gives us more flexibility, I believe.
Right. Okay. Thanks.
Okay, so we have, um, an amended, uh, uh, an approved amendment on a motion, which takes us back to the original motion. So are you all ready to vote on the original motion?
Yes.
Okay, seeing no one else indicating that they wish to discuss, I'm going to ask Ms. Kitchell to call the roll for the vote on Resolution R two zero zero nine dash fifty three.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
No.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor, six ayes, one no.
Thank you. Um, item ten is Resolution R two zero zero nine dash fifty four, and for that, Councilman Hayes is recognized again.
Yeah, this is a resolution authorizing the issuance, sale, and payment of general obligation bonds to the City of Gallatin, Tennessee, an aggregate principal amount of not to exceed eleven million and providing for delay of taxes for this payment of debt service on the bonds. Motion to approve.
Does that work okay, Ms. Tomacoli, or does he didn't need to do the motion?
I think you need to go ahead and amend it first. Cause that's on the agenda.
Yeah.
Yes.
Eleven and a half, okay, eleven and a half million. I'll make amendment to do that.
Okay, so we had a motion and a second with Councilman Hayes and Councilman Overton. Councilman Hayes has now made a motion on an amendment for that eleven five number. I think a second by Councilman Fan, opening the floor for discussion on this. Amendment. Okay, seeing no one wishing to discuss amendment, I'm going to ask that Ms. Kitchell call the roll for a vote on the amended, um, dollar figure of eleven million five hundred thousand.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Ha, uh, Councilman Alexander.
No.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor, six ayes, one no.
Thank you. Um, it does pass with a vote of six to one. Moving now to item number eleven is Resolution R two zero one zero dash fifty five, Councilman Fennell.
Mayor, that was for the amendment.
I'm so sorry. You're right. That's what we, sorry. All fatigued with items on the agenda. Okay, so we pass the amendment. We go back to the original, um, resolution that is now amended, and we can discuss that. Seeing no one wishing to discuss, we did have an orig, uh, a motion, a second on the original, so we will move forward with the vote on that, Ms. Kitchell.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
No.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor, six ayes, one nay.
Thank you. Resolution R two zero zero nine dash fifty four does pass. Item eleven is Resolution R two zero one zero dash fifty five, and Councilman Fennell is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign contract five twenty, twenty twenty with Jay Chumby, Construction Incorporated, I so moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Fennell, a second by Councilman Alexander. Anyone wishing to discuss? Okay, this is Resolution R two zero one zero dash fifty five. Ms. Kitchell, if you would call the roll for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes. Councilman Hayes.
Lucky left the meeting.
He appears to have left the meeting.
Adios.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor, we have six ayes and zero nays.
Okay, it does pass unanimously. Item twelve is Resolution R two zero one zero dash fifty six, Vice Mayor Camp.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign contract six twenty, twenty twenty with Hawkinson Price, NLC. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Camp, second by Councilman Overton. Anyone wishing to discuss? Okay, this is Resolution R two zero one zero dash fifty six. Ms. Kitchell, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes, I can't see his screen, so. Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor, six ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. Item number thirteen is Resolution R two zero one zero dash fifty seven, and Councilman Fennell, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution authorizing the Galton Public Horse Department to apply for the State of Tennessee Volkswagen Diesel Settlement Medium and Lark Truck Grant for Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation. That I so moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Fennell, a second by Councilwoman Love. Um, um, Mr. Wilkinson, is that supposed to say large truck grant? I know it says Lark, but I'm betting it's supposed to be large. Are you here where you can hear us?
Yes, it's supposed to be large.
Okay, yeah, it says LA. So it's large truck. So we have a motion and a second, um, opening the floor for any discussion if you wish to have any. Okay, seeing no one indicating they wish to speak, this is Resolution R two zero one zero dash fifty seven, and Ms. Kitchell will call the roll for the vote.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor, six ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. It does pass unanimously. Item number fourteen is Resolution R two zero one zero dash fifty eight, Councilman Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution accepting public improvements by the City of Gallatin, Tennessee. We're coming a place north, Phase One, Section Four, and I so moved.
Second.
A motion to approve by Councilman Overton, second by Vice Mayor Camp. Anyone wishing to discuss? Okay, Ms. Kitchell, if you would call the roll for the vote on Resolution R two zero one zero dash fifty eight.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor, six ayes, zero nays.
That's passed unanimously. Item fifteen is Resolution R two zero one zero dash fifty nine, and Councilman Fan, you're recognized.
This is Resolution appointing Robert Montgomery and Brian Harris to the Gallatin Construction Board of Adjustments and Appeals, and I so moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Fan, a second by Councilman Overton. Anyone wishing to discuss? Ms. Kitchell, if you'll call the roll for the vote on Resolution R two zero one zero dash fifty nine.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor, six ayes and zero nays.
It does pass unanimously. Now, item sixteen requires that we vote to suspend the rules because this is not something that was considered at a work session. So, um, I'm going to ask, um, Resolution R two zero one one dash sixty to be handled by Councilman Alexander, but I guess first we should vote to suspend the rules and consider.
First, suspend.
Motion by Councilman Fennell to suspend the rules and consider, second by Councilman Overton. Any discussion on that? Can Ms. Kitchell please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor, six ayes, zero nays.
Okay, so we are approved to consider this, and Councilman Alexander.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution authorizing the Summit County Government to construct in addition to Fire Station Number Three, H sixty Red River Road for the purpose of housing, uh, ambulance and EMS personnel, and I so moved.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Alexander. We have a second by Vice Mayor Camp, opening the floor for discussion if anyone has any questions or feels unsure. I know that you all did receive information informing you of the situation, so if your minds not discussed, I am too. Anyone? Okay, seeing no one indicating they wish to discuss further. This is Resolution R two zero one one dash sixty. Ms. Kitchell, if you would call the roll for us, please.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor, six ayes, zero nays.
Thank you so much. That concludes the regular agenda. It moves us now to other business. I do have a couple of things, but I'm going to ask this council first if they have anything that they'd like to bring before other business this evening.
I would like to say one thing, Mayor, if I might.
Councilman Fennell, you're recognized.
Uh, Bill McCord, I was out of pocket last week. I'm sorry. Uh, do we get any, uh, solvable with a Vivian Huntsman? Young lady that's got the fence problem next to the commercial piece of property.
Uh, that item will be on the plant, the Planning Commission discussed that at their, uh, work session last week, and it will be on the Planning Commission agenda, uh, next Monday. So that will be a draft ordinance, uh, it'd actually be a resolution that they will be considering, a draft ordinance, and, uh, assuming they pass that or modify it and pass it, it will be coming to the council in November.
So we're not taking any action till we get this resolved, correct?
Uh, that's correct. We're not taking enforcement action until, uh, the issue's resolved, yes.
Thank you, Bill. That's it for me, Mayor.
Okay.
Mayor, could I say one thing?
Absolutely, Councilman Alexander.
The State of the City address, uh, that we had the other evening was by far one of the best that I've ever attended, and the food was second to none. I even, I even cleaned my plate. I was surprised at myself. So thank you, Mayor. You done a fine job. It was very.
Good job, Mayor.
Very good.
Appreciate that. And Councilman Alexander, you're very kind to say that, and that's really high praise for Chef Christopher because it wasn't even fried chicken, so.
No, but it's first cut chicken salad.
That means a lot for you to say that. I appreciate that some, you had a lot of support in that. I certainly need to acknowledge Jeff Hinchell because he really does the heavy lifting for putting the visual part of that presentation together. Again, so glad that you all were able to attend, and, and I always tell people the highlight of the mayor's address is the food, so properly acknowledged.
No, it, it was very, uh, very, very good. I mean, I was, I had some people that even coughed me. I was shocked, but it was very good.
Good, thank you.
And I, I think everybody should watch that video if they weren't in, um, person there to see it, to see how great the city really is doing.
That's good. That's right.
You know, we hear so much negativity from so many people now about how bad things are and how bad a financial shape we're in, and we're not going to be able to survive next year, and, you know, none of that stuff is true. And, and it just goes to show you that, um, you know, if, if anybody watched that and, and really knows what's going on, they know how well our city's in financial shape, in good shape. And, uh, you know, I just, I, I encourage you, like, uh, Councilwoman Love, I just encourage you to watch, uh, that address, and, uh, it, it was fantastic. There's a lot of people left there, um, that really appreciates what we do, and, and, and I told them thank you myself. You don't hear that very often, but we had a lot of comments about how well, uh, our city's doing and how well our city's run, and I, and I appreciate those comments, and, and I, I'll say that again. Mayor, you done a great job, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Full disclosure, it is a positive perspective on the state of the city. Not to say that we don't have things for trying to address and things we're doing to do, trying to do better. Oftenly, um, use Chief Bandi's words, um, we can always do better because we certainly can, and we have lots of things. I mean, you watch us struggle tonight over the whole bond issuance. I mean, we have a list of forty million dollars in projects we really want to get done for the city, and we're going to find a way.
Mayor, there's, everybody on this council would love to do all forty-four million dollars worth of stuff. I promise you we would, but, you know, we know financially, we can't do that, so.
And, and we are knocking out of the park with applying for grants and, and trying to find creative ways to get things done. And I think we're going to have even more opportunities in the future, um, that we never dreamed of in the past, so it's exciting, it's really exciting times. And the one thing that, you know, I said in the address that I do believe to be so true is, um, growth is change and change is hard. And I fondly remember how Gallatin used to be, but I also remember a lot of the challenges that came with the community when it was much smaller and there weren't opportunities and there weren't jobs, there wasn't prosperity. So it's hard, but it doesn't have to be bad. We can still be an awesome, wonderful, warm, and welcoming community. And I would just encourage everyone to kind of help us continue on that trajectory because I think that is our real opportunity.
And I want to, I want to, I, I don't want to go away without telling the Chamber of Commerce how well they done that, social distance and everything, and how much work they went into that, and I, and I just commend Kim and her staff for the job that they done with that.
It was a tremendously well-produced event. I don't think, um, you could find a professional event planner anywhere that does only that that could have done better. I mean, it was right on time, um, the, the, um, technology worked great. As Councilman Alexander mentioned, the food was good, so that's.
Oh, I thought y'all was talking about the debate there for a minute.
It went good, too.
The only thing, the, the only thing that was funny, but you all need to watch it again and pay attention, was when the mayor said, avoid large crowds, and everybody was sitting there looking at each other. I thought that was so funny.
They did limit tables to five, and, and their, their perspective was that there's far more concentration of people in restaurants than there were in that circumstance. And a lot of people, you know, did wear masks and.
It was good. It was really nice. It was good.
You're right. I had that same thought, yes.
And I'd like to say, to commend everybody associated with the debate the other night, too, because that was a great debate, very good information. And I'd like to say, to commend everybody associated with the debate the other night, too, because that was a great debate, very good information.
Appreciate you all participating, appreciate you all participating that did. Anyone else from this council with other business before I move to my two items?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Did you have something?
I do. I have a certificate of compliance, which is a liquor store that is selling, and of course, you all know, it has to come before this party to start the process before they can go to the ABC. This is the Copper Steel Wine and Spirits located at eleven seventy-six Long Hall of Pike. They have met all the city requirements. I just need confirmation from this body.
Okay.
So move.
Motion by Councilman Overton?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Love. Any discussion? Okay, Ms. Kitchell, you can call the roll for that vote.
Right. Vice Mayor Camp? Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan? Councilman Fan?
He's muted, and I see that he's there.
Is he? I can't hear him.
Star six to unmute Councilman Fan if you're able to hear us.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilman Fennell?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Mayor, six ayes, zero nays. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Alexander, did you have something else?
Yeah, I want to ask our city engineer, Mr. Tuttle, if he's still on.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle, what's the status on the hating track? I know a lot of people ask, is that road closed for repair or repair to keep them closed, not to repair? Is it closed permanent, I guess, what I'm asking?
This is Nick Tuttle, city engineer, and it is permanently closed. That it will be reconnected. The Albert Gallatin Avenue extension will reconnect to Scott Drive, and so they went ahead and made that closure so that they could begin working on that, that reconnection over around the Scott Drive. They have a lot lot of work to do to realign that intersection so that it, it flows differently, and so that's why they, they went ahead and made that decision. I tried to push them off as long as I possibly could because I knew how it would impact the traffic flow through that area. But we probably got about four to six months, I believe, until that connection to Scott Drive is going to be established.
Okay, because I know it's been very dangerous there on one or another, but some of the cars are still not stopping when they come around that curve, and stopping at the end of Bligh.
Yes, sir.
Coming, coming from Portland, going towards Portland, they're, I guess, hadn't got used to it yet.
Right, it's been that way for seventy years or better. I know, yeah, I know, the, the construction foremen have tried to, to sign and put the advanced warning signs, flags on the stop signs. Trying to do the best they can with that. I'm not sure what else we may be able to do to get folks, but yes, sir.
I appreciate you. Thanks.
Anyone else on the council? Okay, I have two items to discuss. One should be very quick and the other not too much longer. The first thing is I met with the Volunteer State Community College today. They're embarking on the celebration of their fiftieth anniversary next year, and one of the things that they asked me about, which I actually thought would be great, is actually putting banners on our street posts with the brackets that acknowledge their fiftieth anniversary here in Gallatin. I told them, I thought it was great. I didn't think you would have an issue, but I was going to run it by you and see how you all felt about that.
Think they're a great asset to our city, and I'd love for them to do it.
Yeah, they'll probably do it a couple of times throughout next year when we don't have patriotic banners or seasonal banners, or we're not going to have census next year, so... Anyone else have any concerns about it? Okay, and we'll tell them they have our endorsement. Now, the second thing that I have for you all tonight is we're also seeking endorsement, and city engineer Nick Tuttle and superintendent Zach Wilkinson are probably going to weigh in here. But you may recall that several years ago, we were awarded some CMAT grant funds, congestion mitigation, air quality improvement grants, because the president, shortly thereafter they were awarded, signed a, an executive order that limited Buy American waivers. We were not able to actually utilize these grants because ours were for vehicles, and there's no way to purchase a vehicle that's a hundred percent made in America, which is what the Buy American requirement is. So we've got, we've had meetings, we've, we've had so many conversations. Zach has really been vigilant about this and stayed in touch with T-Dot, and they ultimately decided to reopen a, what they're calling a mini-call for these awards that were not actually able to be given, and so they're including the cities and the counties that had funds that could not be utilized because this Buy American waiver is not possible at this time. So we had a call with them last week, and Nick and Zach and I have discussed some ideas about what we think we might apply for. Right now, our strategy, because we definitely want to get these funds back and use them for something to benefit our city. Right now, our strategy is going to submit letters of intent for three different projects. I think they're all good projects. They all meet the CMAT goals, and I will let Zach Wilkinson, because I see him on here, discuss further with you what our thoughts are on the three proposals that we're going to submit letters of intent on.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. So, and just to add to what the mayor said, the projects have to be transportation-related, and certain projects would be eighty percent, eighty percent, twenty percent matched, and then other projects would be a hundred percent funded through the grant. So the first project that I think everybody was in favor of, primarily because it would be a hundred percent funded through the grant, is the continuation of the existing CMAT project we, we got going on with the traffic signal fiber connection. We're in the process, hopefully, we'll actually see some construction in the next three to four months of interconnecting all the traffic signals so they can work and communicate better. That covers about half the signals in the city. So we'd like to apply for the second half of the remaining signals to interconnect all them to establish communications and be some small improvements to those intersections as well. The second project was, is also would be falling to that hundred percent funding category, and it includes multiple intersections where we would either add turn lanes, and there, like I said, there's three intersections we've identified for sure, and we're, we're still really kind of brainstorming on different locations, but the three that we've identified would be Belvedere and Long Hall of Pike, Cages Bend and Nashville Pike, and the Kroger intersection at Nashville Pike, adding some cases, a right turn lane or left turn lane, and we might add a few other intersections to that project as well as we think about it a little bit more. And then the third project would be the Lock Four Multi-Use Path, working to get that initial connection from the park to Fredericksburg Drive, which includes the bridge that we've, the bridge is needing replacement in the not, not too far off future, so hoping to maybe incorporate that into that project as well. That would be an eighty percent, twenty percent where the city would match twenty percent of that, those funds. And so that, that would be the third project we recommend. Chances are, we're not going to get all those projects, and it's our understanding, based on conversations with T-Dot, they would grade those projects independently. So we've been competition with the other entities that are applying for this grant that it is a limited field. Only the entities that previously were awarded the funds that the mayor led to having trouble with the Buy American requirements would, are able to apply, so it is a smaller competition base, but... So those are the three projects that were recommended. Wanted to get one year of support, but also see if there's priorities in those projects. Ultimately, they grade them based on how much emissions reduction the project ends up producing. But just wanted to get y'all's thoughts on that.
Good with all three projects.
Mr. Tuttle, did you want to weigh in? I see you popped in here, too, so I didn't know if you wanted to add anything to what we said.
I think you both did fantastic.
Thank you. Any council members with any comments, thoughts, questions?
That's good.
We'll consider that an endorsement and move forward. All right, anyone else with any other business before we move along? Okay, seeing no one indicating they wish to speak further, I am going to open the floor for public recognition on non-agenda-related items. Again, this is the time of the meeting where you can come and you can speak to anything that happens to be on your mind. Hope it's about our city. But you're welcome to speak at this time. Mr. Hinchell will navigate the callers. We ask that you identify yourself, give us your address, limit your comments to five minutes, and a reminder that you star six on your, star nine on your telephone to raise your hand, star six to unmute yourself when you're recognized. And then if you are on the Zoom meeting, you also have to unmute yourself. So with that, Ms. Hinchell, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, and a reminder, if you're using PC or you're on the app, to use the raise your hand function, and then we will recognize you. We do have one person has raised their hand so far, Mark Schmidt. Go ahead.
Excuse me, I hope you can hear me. This is Mark Schmidt, ten eleven Peninsula Drive, and I would like to thank the mayor and the city council for all the assistance and help that you have given us over here on Peninsula and Belvedere Drive. We still have some issues. I've got a call today from a lady that lives on the section of Peninsula close to Lock Four saying as certain, as cars flow down to cross the speed bumps that we put in, other cars will come up behind and pass them on, pass them. So as one per, one car crosses, you got a car passing them on, coming from behind, so we still have some challenges. But the reason for my, I was been spending some time at Triple Creek Park and Lock Four Park, and both are wonderful additions to our city, and Triple Creek seems to be in really, really good shape, but I just have a couple of little suggestions for Lock Four. I've noticed that the fishing pier out there is listing somewhat, so I don't know if there's something going on there. I'm not an engineer, don't understand, but it seems to be listing. There are seats on the fishing pier where folks can sit and fish or whatever, and some of the boards for the seat are either missing completely or cracked, are broken, and that doesn't seem like that's a big fix. We couldn't, you know, go buy a couple of boards and repair those. The cleanliness of the park is, is fair. I was out there the other week, and there is at least out there on a far part of the peninsula out there, there are at least three tires floating in the water and empty five-gallon bucket. So, you know, we got a nice park, and it'd be nice if, if that was kind of taken care of. And I'm sure that's just, you know, stuff that's washed up from, you know, as the tide goes up and down or the, you know, so I, I get that, but... And then the last thing is there's a real nice parking area by the fishing pier, but if you go out on the, at the turnaround out there on the Peninsula Park, there's no parking out there. You actually have to park off this, off the road, and that's rutted up where people's parked and left ruts when it was wet, and I was just wondering if we couldn't maybe do something about that. There's a, in that turn, in that turnaround out there, there's a, there's a metal part there that's got grass. You know, we could possibly pave some of that and put in a half a dozen spots for people to park where they wouldn't have to get off and rut up the area, but overall, it's in pretty good, pretty good shape. I just think with a little bit of effort, we could go from pretty good to really good. So that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Mr., I'm going to say, Mr. Schmidt, I appreciate your observations and your suggestions. Now, it also suggests that for your, I don't know, amusement, maybe, you might check out the State of the City address because we did talk about the, the, the experience that we had with your neighborhood, so you just might check that out.
Okay, I will.
Thanks, Mark.
Last call for anyone who would like to raise their hand and speak, using the raise your hand function. I believe that's it, Mayor.
Thank you so much. So that includes public recognition on non-agenda-related items. You all, I really appreciate the meeting this evening. I think it's been very pleasant and fun and productive, and so they're not always fun because sometimes it's hard to do what we do, but appreciate the spirit of cooperation this evening. With that?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Councilman Fennell?
Second.
Second by Councilman Overton, and we are adjourned. Everybody have a good evening. Be safe. Social...
Bye, everybody.